Good evening. This is City Council member Steve Madison from District Six, welcoming you to our virtual Town Hall meeting. I'm grateful that all of you are sort of tuning in and grateful to the great guests that we have on the very timely and important topic that we have tonight. I can't see if people are actually queuing up yet. It looks like we have a few dozen participants already and rapidly growing. So why don't I start as I do quickly with just an update from City Hall? We hope you all had a happy new year, albeit, as my kids said, a chill new year because of the circumstances of COVID-19. It was certainly, in many respects, a difficult new year for Pasadena without the traditional New Year's Day activities of the wonderful parade and the Rose Bowl game. You know, I always talk a lot about how meaningful those events are for Pasadena. What a wonderful way to start each new year with this festival of, you know, students and education and music and art and sports and the military and veterans and community service and flowers and beautiful floats. And it's all against this backdrop of New Year's Day, which is a feeling of hope and optimism, you know, as we look forward and then our iconic Rose Bowl game. So this year, as you know, we had to do without those things, but such is life. And in terms of our meetings, we've resumed after our holiday recess. We usually take essentially a month off around the holidays. When you look at the weeks that we take off around the Christmas holidays and New Years. Yeah, but we're back at it now. And obviously, the subject of tonight's Town Hall of COVID-19 and our response has been a big part of our bailiwick, but by no means the only one. You know, we're moving forward with a police oversight commission. And I definitely want to let you all know in this Town Hall that applications for those commission appointments are available online on the city's website. And I encourage you all to take a look at that if you have interest in that topic and to apply. As a reminder, we will be appointing eight commissioners through the nominations of each of the seven city council members and then the mayor. So that would be eight. And then we will be seeking and appointing three community-based organizational appointments from local nonprofits. And those will come through the Public Safety Committee and then be presented to the full council. And as always is the case with commissions, there will be nominations from the individual members or in this case, the committee for those three. But the full council will appoint the commission. So we had a robust discussion about that Monday night in terms of the criteria for qualifications, the training that will be required, the legal issues that are pertinent to that particular commission. So it's very important work. And again, I encourage you to look at the website, on the city's website, look at the information if you have an interest. We also, in February, we will be meeting, and all of our meetings are special meetings nowadays because of the requirement that we meet virtually in Zoom sessions much like these. But we will be meeting, a special meeting, I believe on February 6th, to appoint a successor to a former council member, now mayor Victor Gordo in District Five. And we have several applications for that position. We will be conducting interviews as a city council in a public session of the applicants for the new council member position. And then we anticipate that that night we will actually appoint that council member. And unlike some years in the past, we are not, you know, asking the applicants to agree that they will not stand for election for that position. So if they are appointed by the city council, they will be eligible to stand for election at the next city municipal election. Also want to let you know that, at least from where I sit, the new mayor is doing a great job and excited for his enthusiasm and energy and dedication. I feel like somebody's sort of thrown some of the windows open in the mayor's office and there's fresh air and a new attitude there. And, you know, I'm very close to the mayor, as many of you may know. And at his request, I've agreed to be appointed to the Rose Bowl Operating Company Board. Mayor Gordo formerly sat on that board as a representative of the council. And that was not tenable any longer given his duties as mayor. There were a number of council members who were interested in that position, but I was honored that the mayor asked me to take that on. And so my first meeting will be the meeting in early February of the RPOC. So I look forward to communicating with you about that. So with those sort of preliminary remarks out of the way, I want to turn now quickly to the topic at hand, which is our city's response to COVID-19. I listened to a podcast the other day from a fairly prominent public person who was a governor and the like. And he made an interesting comment about public life. He said, you know, "It seems that in public life, you tend to spend 90% of your time on what's urgent and only 10% of your time on what's important." And his message was, you know, "Try as best you can." Obviously, everything is important on some level and certainly the urgent things, the deadlines that you have for, you know, various adoptions of legislation or general plan updates and the like. Those are all super important, but try to focus on what's important. Tonight's topic, I would contend, is both extremely urgent and extremely important. There hasn't been anything more important for the city in the last year than responding to this global pandemic and the way it's impacted our city in particular. And I would also argue strongly that we've been blessed in our city, both structurally and just personally. And what I mean by that is structurally, you know, we are one of only three cities in the state that has a municipal health department. And I know many of you have heard me talk about this before, but most cities, pretty much all the cities in California, I think there's something like 500 cities in California, you know, they lay it off on the counties. Every county is required to have a county health department with a county health director and the like. But for many decades, Pasadena has had a municipal health department. And I have really enjoyed and benefited from working with that department over the years, but never more than this time of the global pandemic. So, you know, there are conversations that we normally wouldn't be part of. We are, have a seat at the table, if you will, in terms of the regional response to COVID. And it's a great, great thing. I think another piece of our structure or environmental sort of response to this has been the fact that we have one of the truly most outstanding hospitals in the country or the world, in Huntington Memorial Hospital. And we are blessed to have that hospital. Certainly in my district, you know, we're, it's part of the district and it's very, very close by. And so, you know, we're very, very mindful of Huntington. And most of us have had, you know, literally from the cradle to the grave in our families. You know, we've seen Huntington in every aspect and many of us, you know, have been treated there. And also, I think we're blessed there. Personally, I think we're blessed because the city manager, Steve Mermell, has done an outstanding job dealing with this crisis and helping the council. We've sort of directed one another and led one another along the way to try to be as helpful as we possibly could while also being mindful of the paramount priority of our public health and safety. Dr. Go, who's done yeoman's-like work, I said at a meeting just yesterday that she was not in attendance. So she hasn't heard this, I don't think. But if it wasn't a gift of public funds, I would recommend that, you know, she take six months off when the pandemic is over because she's literally been working around the clock. And not just her, but her entire department. And Dr. Lori Morgan, the same thing. I know at Huntington, you know, just imagine being, you know, the head of a major hospital like Huntington or the head of an urban health department during this time of COVID. And we get it all, believe me. We get it from all sides. We talk to the families who've lost loved ones to this terrible virus. We get regular communications from the restaurants and other businesses that have been impacted by, you know, the economic realities of COVID and everyone in between. And it's, you know, high stress and it's not always easy to deal with these situations. But again, I would stand up our city's record on this with anybody. So with that sort of introduction to the topic generally, I want to start with Steve Mermell to talk to us about sort of the city's overall response and the resources that we dedicated. And then we'll have some Q and A. And I would suggest that we do the Q and A if schedules permit at the very end. We can, I'll curate the questions. We'll go through each of the three of you and then ask a Q and A. If that won't work, just let me know at some point. But Steve, thanks for being here and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. And it's my pleasure to join everyone. I have some brief remarks. I know everyone really wants to hear from the doctors. But I think Councilmember Madison is right. It's certainly a net positive that we have our own health department for the reasons that the council member mentioned. We are at the seat with almost daily interaction with LA County, the city of LA, the city of Long Beach. Long Beach has its own health department as well. Just last week, Mayor Gordo and I were on a call with Eric Garcetti and Mayor Garcia from Long Beach as we tried, to the extent we can, formulate a uniform approach to dealing with these challenges. But because we do have our own health department, it has made things infinitely more complicated. The city managers in neighboring cities just call me and say, "What's the county going to do? What are the rules?" Here, we have to decide what we're going to do and how we're going to implement them. But I think one thing, just to sort of set aside the COVID response for a minute, because it gets lost in all of this, is the fact that while we've been going through this for about a year, as best I can tell, the quality of city services really hasn't slipped. We've been continuing to provide our services to the community. Hopefully, none of you have noticed a degradation in service levels. If you have, if you have an issue, let me know. Send me an email. But we've continued to keep the lights on, keep the water flowing, pick up the trash. Other cities have had to tell their residents, "There's going to be disruption in your trash service because people are sick." We've been able to manage our way through this and we've done it with great care to our workforce. As you can imagine, with about 2,000 city employees, we have to be careful about spread amongst our own workforce. Sadly to tell you, we have had 180 city employees come down with COVID, one of them fatally. And we've had 354 employees have to quarantine. And I think as some of you know, we've been using the trailers near the Rose Bowl to quarantine first responders. We've probably had 45 people go through and spend a little time in those trailers over the last nine months. So we're continuing to get the job done. We're staggering our work hours so employees don't come into contact with one another more than they need to. We have a lot of people working remotely, but over 70% of city employees still come into the office every day because it's hard to put out a fire remotely. And it's hard to respond to a police call over the phone when you need to show up. And we can't pick up your trash through the computer yet. So still, most people are coming into work. To give you a sense of magnitude in terms of some economics in all this, on revenue side, we've lost between the beginning of the pandemic through now, essentially, we've lost over $31 million in revenue. That's better than 10% of our general fund revenue, and that's just in our general fund. Most of that is sales tax and of course, hotel tax because people aren't traveling. On the expense side, simply related to COVID, we've expended more than $26 million. We're hopeful to get most of that back from the federal government, but they don't write those checks terribly quickly. And when we think about disaster recovery, usually it's localized, a hurricane and earthquake. This is a crisis across our entire country. So I do worry whether we will get full reimbursement from the federal government because everyone's going to be asking for it. And if we get it, when will that be coming? So that's an ongoing concern for us. But again, maintaining our service levels has been a key element in all this. Obviously, the health department has been tip of the spear in terms of the response, but it's really been supported by almost all city departments. Because we're so localized, we can go out and inspect every restaurant. We got a little bit of criticism from people back in November. The county shut down all outdoor dining and we felt we could keep it open because we were doing very rigorous enforcement. We were able to do that for about 10 more days until the governor's order came in effect. And I'm happy that this week we're able to reopen outdoor dining. We did that effective Monday. If you've been one of those people who've gone to one of our M-Pods, one of our medical points of distribution, we're getting a lot of nice feedback from people who have gone through there, you'll note that those operations are supported by staff of numerous city departments working together. We've redirected staff resources to support our effort. Our libraries are closed except for drive-up, so we've told our librarians to do contact tracing. These are the kind of things that we're doing to shift our resources to meet the needs of our community. So I'm going to stop there because I know we want to hear from the doctors and I'll stick around and be available to respond to any questions that come my way at the end.
Excellent. Thank you very much, City Manager Mermell. Let's go now to Dr. Lori Morgan at Huntington Hospital. Thank you for being here, doctor.
Oh, it's my pleasure. Thank you. And I really would be remiss if I didn't start with thanking both Mr. Mermell and Dr. Go for their partnership. I have to say, over the last 10 months, we've all gotten to know each other much better than probably we had ever intended. But I think together Pasadena has really been able to take great care of our community because we have been able to work together so effectively. I have a series of questions that I was asked to touch on, so I'm just going to kind of go through some information that hopefully would be useful. You know, over the course of the pandemic at Huntington, we've tested almost 35,000 individuals for the COVID disease. We've identified over 4,500 people to be COVID-positive and have hospitalized over 2,000 people. 418 of those patients have needed ICU care and 295 of them had needed ventilators. And I would tell you that sadly, 309 patients have died of COVID in the hospital. As a reminder, we do serve the region. We don't serve just Pasadena. So those numbers for us are more regional numbers than the city of Pasadena. What I will say is at our peak, in early January, we had a maximum of 206 patients in the hospital at one time just with COVID. So all along, we have continued to take care of our citizens who are having strokes and heart attacks and needing emergency surgery. So we really essentially have had to double our census in the hospital. Thankfully, I have to say, this morning, we had 144 patients. So over the last several weeks, we have been able to discharge a number of patients. Although I will tell you, we continue to see large numbers of patients who are infected and who are ill and who continue to see deaths every single day. Over the course of the pandemic, in order to manage the volume that I just spoke about, we have added 162 additional beds to our normal bed capacity. We've expanded our ICU space from 30 beds to 76 beds. And we've added these beds by opening previously closed units, doubling room capacity and utilizing areas that aren't intended for 24-hour care, such as turning our endoscopy unit into an ICU. We've also added tents and we even added beds in our auditorium. In order to manage all of the patients, our normal staffing would not be able to tolerate that. So we have had to adapt. We've adapted by adjusting our nurse-to-patient ratios while adding non-nursing assistants such as student nurses to be able to keep a number of people available to take great care of our patients. We've hired temporary nurses that are known as travelers. We've secured some nurses and EMTs from the state pool in order to continue to manage the volume. We also have had our staff doing a significant amount of overtime so that we would be available to the community when the community needed us. Huntington, as a requirement from the state, developed in collaboration with a large group of Southern California hospitals and within an ethical framework, a scarce resources policy in order to prepare for a scenario where resources, whether beds, nurses, ventilators or medications, were limited and could not be offered to everyone. I will tell you, no one is happier than I am that we have not needed to activate that policy, but we felt strongly that we needed to be prepared and in fact, had a state mandate to be prepared to do that. I did have a question around the variants of the virus that we're seeing. Our testing is able to identify variants of the virus, but really, the treatment is currently the same and so we don't report those separately. Generally, that's a broader epidemiologic effort that's done at state labs or specialty labs. To date, and Dr. Go may have more up-to-date information, we still are seeing, while we've seen a few cases, in general, the rates of the variants that some are seeing from South America and Britain are still pretty low in Southern California. But we are very mindful that they are both either more infectious or more deadly than the current strains that we have been managing. We have been very lucky in terms of hospital supplies, PPE, ventilators, medications, et cetera. We have had, we have never been short. I will tell you that very early on in the pandemic, a lot of that was due to the support of our community and the generosity of our community who are able to help us particularly with masks. We certainly are coming off of a current surge at the current time and we hope that we are past the surge stage, though I think we'll have to watch carefully in terms of what some of these variants may be and whether we might have a resurgence of a large number of patients. One of the questions that I really got is how can the community help to support Huntington? I would tell you, first of all, wear your mask, maintain social distancing. All that stuff is still necessary. And above all, please get vaccinated. And I know that Dr. Go is going to talk a lot about vaccines. I will tell you that some of the challenges that Steve identified with the city departments are really the same for Huntington. You know, we have all kinds of workers and we've had to shift people to duties that they've had to be flexible to do that they don't normally do or haven't done for years. We certainly are in a pretty significant financial deficit due to the combination of increased expenses due to COVID as well as decreased revenues as we've displaced other services. You know, we feel very strongly about continuing to be available for all the citizens in our community that need medical care. And that includes patients with COVID as well as patients with other disease. And again, we are really hoping to get back to more business as usual as people get vaccinated and we develop some of the herd immunity that we are hoping for in our community. And that is what I think was hopefully brief enough for you, Mr. Madison. And again, happy to stay and answer any potential questions.
That was great. Thank you, Dr. Morgan. As I turn to Dr. Go, I just want to mention a couple of things. There is a Q and A button on the bottom of your screen, or there should be. Please feel free. We've gotten a couple of comments and questions already. Feel free to send us those. I will try to curate those for the Q and A period. So please do use that. The other, we did get one question about will the recording of this meeting be available? I know that K-Pass is taping, so I would say consult the District Six website and we'll make sure to have information about that available in terms of when you can view this if you're not, obviously, that person was on the Zoom, but maybe others, family members or friends want to see it and can't be here tonight. So Dr. Go, we turn to you and look for your report. Thank you.
Good evening. I have a couple of slides with information to share. So Chris, I think we'll get that up. Thank you. Next slide, please. This slide demonstrates what we call an EPI curve. On the x-axis, or horizontal axis, you'll see time. This is by date. And on the y or vertical axis, you'll see a number of cases. And the gray bars indicate from day to day our number of new cases of COVID-19 confirmed by testing each day in Pasadena. And the blue line is a rolling average that gives you, it smoothes out the ups and downs, that variation from day to day. And so you can see that, starting from Thanksgiving, pre-Thanksgiving and Thanksgiving activities, then Christmas, then New Years, we saw a huge surge that was a result of mixing, people gathering and in various venues. And the line fortunately has started to trend down, but we are still at about 47, 48 new cases a day of COVID-19 still diagnosed. And unfortunately, we are at an average of about six new deaths a day. And we know that because of the course of illness for COVID-19, that's the pattern we've seen, which is that we have a surge in cases first and then we see a surge in the number of deaths from COVID-19. And the place where we are today with nearly 50 new cases a day is still higher than we actually, where we were with the new stay-at-home order that was implemented by the state that has now been lifted. And the rationale for that is that because of the fact that we do see a lag and because the pressure on the ICU beds is starting to lift, it's actually a projection for four weeks from now that ICU capacity will be at a threshold of 15%. So that's why you saw a change in orders and a lifting of the stay-at-home orders this week, which puts us back into this purple. The reason why that line around the graph is purple is because the tier system that the governor, the state orders follow have this color coding where while we are in that purple tier, there are numerous restrictions for each sector on what types of activities are allowable. To try to continue to see this case rate go down and come to hopefully the levels that we saw before, when we were at the lowest in Pasadena, we're seeing zero to three cases a day. And we'd like to be there as soon as possible. Next slide. So we wanted to talk about vaccines today. In this purple box, you'll see the two vaccines that have FDA emergency use authorization. We're extremely, extremely fortunate that the technology has been so effective and so safe and to be in a position just a year after the start of this pandemic here in the United States, a year from when the first cases were detected and reported in California, to already have access to vaccine that is effective and safe is really, we're just very, very fortunate. And so the two types you've heard of are Pfizer and Moderna. They are similar in that they utilize mRNA technology. They are, the efficacy is similar, 95%. They both require two doses and Pfizer is 21 days apart and the Moderna 28 days apart. The CDC has now put in writing that up to six weeks apart is acceptable. So I wanted to provide that information so that if there's an instance where the ideal of maintaining that 21 or 28 days is not able to be maintained for whatever reason, the CDC is still saying that up to six weeks is okay. And in both studies, they really tried to include representation of diverse populations in the United States. Other vaccines that have been approved elsewhere, the Oxford-AstraZeneca has been approved in other countries. It is two doses, 30 days apart and is pending approval here in this country. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which is one-dose vaccine, is, we are also anxiously awaiting data, Phase III clinical trial data from that, which was stated to be available soon as far as the data. Next slide. So on our website, if you haven't visited it, I hope that it provides a lot of the information that answers the questions that people are wondering about. This vaccine prioritization is what was published and is available on the state website as well. We are following the state public health department prioritization we are required to. And we are also, the, that, the state prioritization is based on the advisory committee for immunization practices for the CDC, the, what the prioritization that they set forth as a framework looking at both risk, risk of exposure and a risk of negative outcomes from COVID-19 and equity based on those factors. And so we are currently vaccinating all individuals for several weeks. We have been vaccinating healthcare workers who are providing direct care and residents and staff of long-term care facilities. We've made significant progress in Pasadena, reaching those populations. And as a result, we were able to open to residents in Pasadena who are sixty-five and older. And we hope that in the coming weeks, we will be able to move through the phase one B tier one, which includes some essential workers such as education staff, childcare staff and our first responders, police and fire and food and agriculture workers. After that, the governor has indicated this week that the, there may be a shift in the prioritization published by the state. So we are anticipating that and the shift will be more age-based and less sector-based. So we will see what that, what that is and we'll update our website when we get that information and we'll, we'll share it with you. Next slide. So these are other phases that were defined, the way they were defined previously, and I expect that there will be some shift. Next slide. So as I mentioned, these are the groups we're now vaccinating and the question is where, where can I get a shot? There are multiple places, as you can see. The healthcare system we have been partnering with and our hospital has given multi, many thousands of shots, four thousand approximately at least, to healthcare workers and others in the community. And they've committed to continuing to provide vaccine to the groups that are eligible. And we help by providing that prioritization and doing the outreach to those communities who, that are eligible and sending them either to our vaccine clinic or to the hospital. In addition, we have some urgent care facilities in the city that receive vaccine and are vaccinating. We have health systems like Kaiser and Dignity Health that are receiving direct allocations from the state of vaccine and are offering it to the eligible tiers of people. We have individual doctors' offices and we have community clinics. Our federally qualified health centers in our city, Wesley and Chat Care are, have received vaccine and are able to vaccinate. In addition, you'll see a variety of pharmacies and we have different kinds of partnerships. There are partnerships at the federal level where teams from CVS and Walgreens were provided vaccine directly from the federal government and went into our nursing homes. And it's continuing for several months to go and help supplement with vaccinating. And then also the individual pharmacies at various grocery stores where they are offering appointments, again, according to the prioritization tiers and are able to help vaccinate our community members. Employers are certainly going to play a role and that includes schools, universities and grocery stores and corporations. So that is still being worked on and we'll see how that rolls out. And finally, public health and certainly as a local public health jurisdiction, we exercise annually with flu shots, this model of this MPOD model, the points of dispensing. And we have partners, for example, with the school district, we've have clinics there every year and we have community clinics as well. And so we, this is one of our core functions and we have been able to do that here with, with good success and good response. And we hope that we'll be able to provide vaccine to you through that venue if you're not able to access it somewhere else. And the state has also this week announced that they are going to be contracting with a third-party contractor. And so it's still very general and vague. We don't know the details of what that means exactly to do some kind of coordination on behalf of, behalf of the state. Mainly, I think to keep better tabs on supply and increase efficiency and reduce the lag time of getting shots from the, from the manufacturer into arms. And also just making sure the data systems are all aligned and flowing in a timely fashion, which isn't always happening. For example, providers have to enter into the California Immunization Registry within twenty-four hours once you get a shot so that we have those records and we know where the shots are and who's getting them and how many of them are being used. And so I think these moves are to try and encourage that. Next slide. So on our website, we have a vaccination dashboard as well. And the numbers to note here, we can, I can talk in more detail about all of them for others, for anyone who's interested. But we, the total number of vaccines that we've ordered, which equals the number of vaccines that have been allowed or allocated to us from the state, because we order everything that they allocate to us is a little over twenty thousand. The numbers are updated today or should be updated, have been updated maybe an hour ago. So these are from just before that. But you can see that I think we now have twenty-two providers in Pasadena who have been approved by the state to be able to safely manage vaccine, receive it, store it, track it and, and administer it and also report into the data systems. And so we are only one of those twenty-two, so there are other places that are vaccinating in our city. And really the three, three quarters of the vaccine has gone to those other providers and one quarter has come to us so far. And we have been administering vaccine as quickly as we can. Next slide. This, these are pictures of Varns Pharmacy, the vaccination room in the back of the store on Colorado at Sierra Madre. And they did an outdoor clinic and walk-up clinic in the parking lot. Again, everything's by appointment only so that they can control the flow and make sure everyone gets served. Next slide. Some more pictures from that walk-up clinic. Next slide. We have sent out teams of nurses and administrative staff to provide vaccines at skilled nursing facilities and also at the firehouses for our first responders. Next slide. And this is, these are some pictures from our operation at Victory Park or MPOD there. And we, just this week, because of the weather and because of a partnership with Pasadena City College, was able to move to their parking garage and it has gone very well. So we'll be back there tomorrow. Next slide. And next slide. So what to think about before, during, and after your COVID vaccine? I really encourage everyone to learn about the vaccines and get questions answered if anyone has, is unsure about what it means for them and what they should consider. Call your doctor and talk about it. Go to our websites and I have a couple of resources on the, the next slide or two slides in for you to go to. When you are eligible, please call your doctor to find out about availability or go to our website. One of the questions I saw from a community member was, should they only sign up for Pasadena sites? No, actually, our partners and colleagues in LA County are also accepting Pasadena residents. So if you are able to get a slot on the LA County website, I encourage you to do that. But we're happy to have you too. When you're getting your shot, please read the fact sheet. You'll get a thick packet with information specific to the vaccine that you're going to receive. It tells you about the ingredients in the vaccine, what effects you might, you might have. Not everybody has side effects, but some people may feel fatigue or headache or have arm pain afterward. And so you can, you can know what to, to expect. And when you get your vaccination card, please save it. It is okay to have one shot, your first dose on one vaccine card and your second dose recorded on another second vaccine card. You can just staple them together and, or clip them together and keep it. And if you need that record, it's fine. We have gotten that question before. So then after your shot, if you need a second dose, if you're, if you're, get a shot in Pasadena, we will email you when it's time to sign up for your second dose. So don't worry, we have everything tracked and we know how to contact you. It, do report side effects. So there, there are ways to do that. You can notify us, you can notify your provider or wherever you got your shot. And there's a adverse events reporting system that has been in existence for many years that helps us track to see, and the CDC looks at it to see if there are side effects that they didn't expect or to look into cases to see if they actually are due to the vaccine or if they're just linked in time. So a lot of things happen to people that may have just been associated in, as far as the timing with the vaccine and not actually caused by the vaccine. And then there's a new app called V-Safe that everyone should enroll in after they get their shot. We have flyers about it, so we hand, hand out flyers, but even if you just Google V-Safe, it will text you and ask you about any symptoms that you may be experiencing. It texts you probably daily for the first week and then it spreads, spreads out and then it stops after your second dose. So it's very helpful to get that information as millions and millions of Americans get vaccinated. It helps the CDC know what everyone's experience is like. And then to continue the three Ws. So the next slide illustrates the three Ws, which you all already know. Next slide, please. Oh, not yet. So there was a question about how to get information. And on our website, for people who are sixty-five and older, because that is the group that's eligible right now, we have a vaccine inquiry form. Also, you can call three one one. It's six two six seven four four seven three one one. And that is our Citizen Service Center and the staff there are prepared to help you if you prefer to talk to a person. And we have been maintaining this inquiry list and we verify that people are actually Pasadena residents. And we reach out to them when we have appointments available. And it has worked out very well because it, it reduces the number of people signing up for slots who actually aren't eligible. It also will help with not having a mad brush so that it becomes a competition of just who gets logs on first. And, and I don't want people to feel that kind of pressure. We do intend, as vaccine becomes available to us, to keep doing this and keep offering it. So we, we will definitely reach out to you and, and get you your shot. Next slide. The three Ws are to wear a face covering over your nose and your mouth, wash your hands and watch your distance, six feet or greater, and please no mixing between households. And last slide is our websites, the CDC website, the Pasadena Public Health Department website and the state vaccinate all fifty-eight website, which has a lot of information. And I'm happy to ask, answer any other questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Go. One thing I want to make sure we do is repeat the Citizen Service Center phone number, please. Am I correct that it's six two six seven four four seven three one one?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a bunch of great questions. I want to kick it off and I'll sort of, if I may, direct the questions to one of the three of you. I, I would say, just as a prefatory matter, we've heard a number of reports about, you know, the vaccine, obviously, which is really the focus of many of the questions at this point. And, you know, there, there really hasn't seemingly been a coherent national plan. We're hearing now that there is one, but I wonder, Dr. Go, to stick with you for a moment, if you could just walk us quickly through, you know, people think we're manufacturing the vaccines at City Hall or we're sitting on a cache of them or, there are a lot of very understandable questions about sort of a day in the life of one dose of the vaccine and how it gets into hopefully our arms from wherever it comes from.
Well, we had our first White House call for state and local jurisdictions today and I heard a bit of it. And in what we've noticed, which is a welcome change, is just a, a change in communication. There really is an attempt now to reach out to us and that's what we're asking for, knowing that if our vaccine supplies are low right now, we need at least information. So transparency and tell us what to expect because we, it's very hard for us to plan if we don't know what's coming or even where the areas of, of the unknowns are. So we're asking for information and so I think I'm optimistic about that change. The vaccine is contracted and purchased by the federal government from the manufacturers. And so there, there are limitations on how much vaccine can be manufactured, how much is purchased. And then it gets distributed to states, allocated to states and allocated to local health departments. But also all those other providers I mentioned, some of these multi-county entities that provide healthcare and also the pharmacies. So we get our local supply and we are charged with using it as quickly as possible. And so that's what we've been doing and we've been getting out to providers as, as quickly as possible. A lot of folks were concerned about, I got my first dose, am I going to get my second dose? Well, it's been tricky to navigate because of all the uncertainty about how much vaccine the state's going to get and how much we're going to get locally. And so there's, we've been trying to navigate between use it all, use all, everything we get as first doses as quickly as possible without any guarantee from the state of when we'll get enough second doses. And if it will keep everyone on that twenty-eight day or twenty-one day schedule. So we're kind of make, trying to store up and make plans so that our folks will get their second doses while still trying not to stop new first doses. But I think that given the allocation we got this week, we probably will be focusing on second doses for the next two weeks and then be able to start, start up new first doses after that.
So I'm hoping, hoping the only dumb question is the one that isn't asked. Are the doses that are utilized for the first and second dose the same? It's just in the, in case of the individual recipient, whether it's their first or second?
They are exactly the same.
So that, to some extent, that's helpful, I suppose, because it gives you some flexibility, but it also creates a challenge in terms of managing the, the dose administration properly. And another question is, are the tier systems, which I have to confess are, have been dizzyingly confusing. And I've wondered, you know, in grad school, we studied, you know, the notion of a busy Manhattan intersection with, you know, a thousand pedestrians crossing the street. It would not be feasible or frankly desirable to try to legislate exactly how they do that. They just figure it out. And I've certainly wondered at times whether we're trying to do too much with all of these tiers and professions and that. And I mean, certainly here in Pasadena, I think everyone in this meeting has a good sense of where our priorities should be. But are those, my question for you is, are those tiers and the priorities, the eligibility, if you will, are those also coming from the federal government or the state government or somewhere else?
So as, as you can see, the, we don't own vaccine, right? It's given to us by the federal government. So we have to follow their guidelines and, and then given to us from the state and we have to follow their guidelines. So the state's guidelines are in more detail than the federal, the federal governments. And so it's printed, what's, what's on paper is, is the state's guidelines. And they're consistent with the fed, federal guidelines, just a little bit more tailored to the populations we have in California.
And that, we did get one question about this interrelation between the different levels of health directorates or departments or what have you. And am I correct that vis a vis the state, that we can be more restrictive but not more lenient as a general matter with regard to COVID orders?
With regard to orders, yes, that is correct. We, we have to, the state orders supersede our orders. But if we want to be more restrictive, as we have seen in LA, we've been more affected than other, some other counties in the state. So at times we've been more restrictive than the state for that reason. With vaccine, it's a matter of really the governor getting, jumping the gun a little bit as far as opening up to everyone sixty-five and older when in actuality, we didn't have enough vaccine. The healthcare providers weren't even vaccinating, you know, fit done getting vaccinated when that announcement was made. So it's a little tricky for us trying to open the floodgates and, and let everyone get vaccinated at once because it clogs up the system and, and then you have equity issues.
And again, just to stick with you for a moment, Dr. Go, I'm sorry you're on the hot seat right now, but you handle it so well. A lot of questions about the first and the second dose. And I think one thing to understand is we're not just talking about Pasadena as a population of a hundred and fifty thousand, let's say. We're also talking about people who work here, many of our city employees, for example, community, you know, community facing employees, which is pretty much all of our city employees. Many of them don't live in the city. So when we look at those numbers of vaccinations, we can't necessarily compare them to the number of Pasadena residents, I suppose.
So yeah, for, as an example, we had calculated fifty, it was actually fifteen thousand healthcare workers. And I would say most of them are not Pasadena, Pasadena residents. So we're tasked with vaccinating a far larger proportion of LA County than, than are just the people who live in our city. But they gave us the amount of vaccine proportionate to that. So we weren't, we did not receive a smaller amount. Yeah.
So a question that we've received from many different residents is, if I'm fortunate enough to get my first vaccine somewhere, do I have to get my second vaccine at that same somewhere?
So we have been saying, yes. So we have been saying, yes, please do. And I think for LA County, it probably makes less of a difference. But for us, when we're getting 100 doses in one week or 2,000 doses in one week. If someone got their vaccine in Pomona, their first dose, and then comes and gets a second dose here. And we're planning and allocating for a two dose series, then that person would be taking a second dose from somebody else who got their first dose here. And so that's not, because the supply is so low, that's not something that's tenable or fair, really. Once we get lots and lots and lots of vaccine everywhere, then I think we would love to vaccinate anybody, all comers. And they could go anywhere to get their first or second doses. So for now, yeah, for now, please, please go back to the same place.
And so a refinement of that question would be, let's say I got my first dose, and I have not been vaccinated, by the way. But if I got my first dose in Pasadena at one of the 22 providers, do I need to go back to that same provider as well?
We are planning to make enough second doses available to those people who got their first doses here in the city.
So the answer to my question is yes, that if I went to Bond's, I can't go to Ralph's for the second one or?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. I mean, I think that it, it will help our tracking if you go back to the same place. And, and it will, it will result in everyone getting their second dose that we're planning for.
Okay. I mean, again, I don't think blame could be laid with anyone here. But I will tell you the overall experience, I said at one of our council meetings, Steve will remember this, you may as well, that this should be like the National Guard on every other block, sticking people in the arm. Like this should be almost, as the, the new president has indicated, the Defense Emergency Act, you know, where we're, we're pushing these vaccines out around the clock and getting everybody vaccinated immediately. And the notion that we have to go online, you know, like we're trying to buy tickets to Coachella or something. And, you know, we're searching everywhere and putting in different names and like, it's, it's just not, not adequate, frankly. And again, it's not our problem and I want to make sure everybody under, it is our problem, but it's not of our making. It's, you know, the, the paucity of, of vaccines that are available to us, the criteria that are imposed on us. But it is frustrating. I've got questions here from somebody who says I'm 68 and have some health conditions and I'm just in the queue. And I'm not getting anybody. My next door neighbor is 66 and he got his appointment. And, and we have gotten some very favorable feedback from the M pods, for example, about how, how well we've handled that. But it sounds like the big solution is just sufficient numbers of the vaccines.
That, that we've built out the infrastructure. I think the, I think that in the long run, we're going to need much more infrastructure, as you alluded to. But I think we are ready and to, to receive and administer much more quantity of vaccine.
Do we expect that in, in the near future, our own physicians will have the vaccine? Because for many of us, you know, we have a primary care physician and the, the most user friendly thing would be, and there would be some other benefits to this, I would imagine too.
Yeah.
In terms of knowledge of your, your health conditions and all, that our physicians will have the vaccine in their offices?
Our preference is for you to get medical care at your primary care medical home, because that is your home. That's, those are the people who know you and manage your health. It requires your provider to go through some additional administrative steps. And not all providers have been interested or willing to do that. Because frankly, it hasn't really been all that easy dealing with the state systems that are new. And they've just been setting up and they're, just today, we had another training and they're updating and merging all these systems and putting them into a new system. And so many providers have applied and been approved in Pasadena. And when we get vaccine, we'll give it to them. And so there are 21 healthcare providers out there who have vaccine already. And we want that number to be much higher.
And certainly I think, just speaking to the city manager, that would be a place where I think the, the city should make a priority of training and technical assistance to those, you know, healthcare professionals to get certified or what have you. But last question for Dr. Go. As, I mean, you're a clinician yourself and after we get the vaccines. And by the way, I, I certainly hope the Johnson and Johnson vaccine comes out quickly. I have no interest in Johnson and Johnson in any way, shape or form. But I, I do think there's an efficacy to one dose if it's sufficient. And, but after the vaccine has been received, should we still wear our masks? Should we still socially distant and the like?
Yes, absolutely. Please continue those steps to keep your risk low. We, we think that the efficacy is very high for these vaccines, but that's a clinical measure from the study. And tends to be a little lower in actuality in, in real life. And also we don't know if people who are vaccinated, if, even if they don't get sick themselves, could be like a carrier and have the virus and transmit it to others. So we certainly wouldn't want that to happen well. So many people still are not vaccinated and we have not reached herd immunity and it will take many, many months. And a lot of interest in being vaccinated. We need everyone in our community. So I think the, it's really important right now to, as I mentioned, to address those questions so that people are ready when they're, when it's offered to them to, to take the vaccine for, for everyone's sake.
Certainly. Well, let me turn to another clinician, then Dr. Morgan. You know, at Huntington, are you, are you concerned about this news that we're hearing about variants on the vaccine, on the virus rather? And I think many of us are wondering, you know, is, are we looking at a future where every year, just as we get our flu shot for that year's sort of version of the flu, we may need to get our COVID vaccine for that year's COVID as well?
Yeah, I think, I think most of us, I don't know, you might be safer with Dr. Go, because remember you're talking to a surgeon here. But the, the, what I will say is I think the information that is out there, just specifically with regard to the variants, that there is some, but perhaps not as high efficacy for each of those variants as there are with sort of the original strains. So you might not be as protected from those strains. Some of the facts are that the strain out of Britain seems to be more infectious. So people are more easily infected than the original strain. The one out of South America actually seems to have a higher mortality rate. So there are some nuances to, to these different strains of the viruses that, that may, may change the responsiveness. And I, and I think in some of the early data and remember, all of this is, is less than, the oldest data for these vaccines is six months old. Is that the vaccine may be effective for up to two years, but maybe not longer than that. So it may well be that when you get your flu shot, that you also need your COVID shot. Or at some point, maybe there'll be some double valent vaccine and you'll stuff it all in. Well, this is mRNA vaccine. So at least those ones, some of it depends on the type of vaccines. But, but I think most medical professionals anticipate that yes, you would need to get a flu shot and a COVID shot probably in the future. I'm trying to see as Dr. Go nodding her head or not. And, and I will tell you, some of the discussion amongst physicians is that this may, may well not be the last pandemic that we face. I mean, and, and the reality is this certainly is the one that has been the broadest and most wide reaching. But if you think about it compared to perhaps 30 years ago, when I don't think anyone had heard of a pandemic since the 1918 flu. I mean, we have had a number of, I mean, there was the Ebola issue and there was the H1N1 issue. And we are starting to see more problems with infections. And so we've all gotten a lot of training and we're really smart. And my prayer is that we don't have to use it again for another pandemic. My suspicion is that we will.
Well, and I, I want to mention that I'm the chair of the Legislative Policy Committee. And yesterday we had our meeting, including briefings from our federal and state legislative advocates about specifically federal and state COVID relief broadly defined. And one of the things that the staff and the advocates pointed out to me is that at Dr. Go's, to the committee, was that at Dr. Go's insistence, a couple of years ago, we asked in our platforms that attention be paid to the potential for pandemic and what it would do. And, and so that was certainly prescient and it's definitely, you know, burned me once, shame on you virus, burn us twice. It's going to be shame on all of us if we're not prepared. Have you seen, Dr. Morgan, at the hospital, any severe reactions to the virus? I read one piece about a particular lot of Moderna that caused anaphylactic shock in, you know, a small number, but for that kind of serious medical reaction, that there's no number that's too small to not be concerned, you know?
For the, we've given about 5,000 doses now and we have not seen anything. I think we've sent maybe three patients to the ER to get evaluated, but all were able to be discharged to home with relatively mild symptoms. And, and Dr. Go, I know that you've done about 9,000, so I'm not sure what you have seen.
We also have not had any serious reactions that would require hospitalization.
Certainly insufficient sample size to be notable in my mind. And, you know, I, I am troubled that there seem to be a not insignificant number of persons that are opposed to receiving the vaccine for whatever reason. And, you know, certainly I can understand if there are long-held sincere religious beliefs. Or I suppose pre-existing conditions that would contraindicate the, the vaccine. But I have a hard time imagining that it wouldn't simply increase the need for the vaccine. Do you have a take on that, Dr. Morgan?
You know, I think, I think it, in my mind, I, my hope is that it's going to come down to education. But, you know, I mean, I think a lot of, there are a lot of rumors and unfortunate outright falsehoods that have been propagated in, in social media. And I, you know, I know that one of the areas of concern has been because previously the fastest vaccine was seven years and that, you know, somehow a one got waived. And then this one was developed in, in less, and developed and tested in less than a year. And, and that's almost true, except for this is, this is technology. This new mRNA vaccine is, is actually was developed around, it's a technique that was developed around Ebola. And so a lot of work had gone into this for many years. It wasn't like very, from the very beginning, from the start, there was true development. All of the technology was available. It just had to be adjusted for this particular infectious agent. And so, so yeah, it was developed in a year, kind of, a year built on many years worth, worth of work to just adapt the technology. And so, you know, again, that's one of the, you know, the rumors that's out there is that, yeah, you know, this is poison because it could never be developed in less than a year. And, you know, the answer is it, it wasn't. And so again, our, our hope is that as we, you know, it's, it's part of why I'm so eager and anxious to do things like this and to work with Dr. Go and Mr. Mermel. Because we really want people to know and understand that this really, A, it's really important and necessary. B, and B, that it actually is safe and that there are many, many more reasons to get the vaccine than to not get the vaccine.
Yeah, I think Daniel, Daniel Patrick Moynihan famously said, we're, we're all entitled to our own opinions, but not our own facts. And I think the scientific facts are clear about the danger of this virus and the efficacy of a vaccine. But I also think people, many people feel that they have less control over their lives and their futures today. Understandably in many cases, and you know, this is something they can control, darn it. You know, I'm not going to take that, that vaccine. I'll let everyone else take it. But of course, that's a fallacy because this is highly infectious. And, you know, so I, I am concerned about that. I saw you nodding, Dr. Morgan, when Dr. Go recommended we continue to wear masks and socially distant even after we've received the vaccine. So I take it you concur.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. And for all the same reasons, it is pretty clear that there are asymptomatic carriers. And, and I would also say, just like the flu shot, I mean, you can still get the flu. Now, what the, what the shot can help you do is, is not react to it as strongly and not get as sick. And so it may even be possible, again, still very early for people to get COVID. But hopefully the vaccine will make sure that they either are asymptomatic or, or they don't get very sick at all. It is something more akin to just, just a light, a light cold. And, but that, just because you don't get sick, doesn't mean that you can't spread it. And again, if you're sitting next to your neighbor that has decided they want everyone else to get the flu shot, you're going to be fine, but you might get that person. And I, you know, I have to tell you, you don't have to look very hard for videos of people saying, I didn't believe any of this is real. And now I'm in an ICU getting ready to be put on a ventilator. And so it is real. People do get very sick. The mortality rate compared to the flu is very high. And we want to save our citizens.
Well, thank you, Dr. Morgan. Steve Mermel, let me ask you one question that a number of people have asked. And again, I, I, I know that we have prepared remarks in this regard, but it's still worth repeating. Why aren't the schools open? And of course, the prepared part is, that's a separate body. The school board manages the district, although certainly our school district is not unlike, you know, all school districts, it seems. I don't know that anybody's going back to school yet or could under the governor's orders. But I wonder if you could speak to that just because of our close, you know, working relationship with the district.
Sure. And excuse me, and I may need Dr. Go to help me out a little bit. But again, this is an area where the state drives it in the first instance. And then delegates it out to the school districts or in this case, or in some cases, the independent schools, whether they choose to open or not. The governor allowed for a waiver process and Dr. Go has processed probably 25 or more waivers. Where independent schools can open to certain age and grade ranges. This would be the earlier, the primary grades. What we're seeing, I think the truth is, in the public school arena, it's a little more complicated because there's unions involved. And most of the unions, as it relates to public schools, are sort of negotiating with school boards and school leaders about re-opening. My own wife runs early education program for LAUSD and dearly would like to get the kids back in school. But it's subject to sort of their own local politics and issues. So to the extent that within the governor's framework, schools can open, Dr. Go has been processing those waivers and working with, with our local independent schools. PUSD, just like all other public schools, will have to make their own decision on their timing.
I will say that we're in a, in a better position now and the state is really making a push. They are offering funding to LEAs, local educational agencies and, and school districts. If they meet certain set of criteria, which includes having protocols in place, meeting Cal OSHA requirements. And they are working hard to make those deadlines because they, they want that money to help support and help their, to support their opening and have their schools open and, and bring, help their students catch up. They also, the testing resources are now being offered free from the state lab in Valencia to schools. And PUSD has been working on this for a couple of weeks to be able to follow the guidelines for weekly PCR testing. With our high case rates right now, that's the framework of testing of students and staff on a weekly basis. And then on top of that, if the more people we can get vaccinated who are on that school campus, the less likely they will be to have outbreaks. So those are really positive forward steps.
And Steve Mermel, you know, at Ledge Policy, yesterday we heard about the relief efforts that are underway. And there seems to be at least cautiously optimistic hopes about both the federal and the state government. You know, the new president is pushing a, an economic stimulus program as well as the vaccine initiatives that he's, he's managing, Dr. Go alluded to. At the state level, there's a $15 or $16 billion unexpected surplus that the state has. And the hope is that, that we will benefit from that. It's unfortunate that some of these programs, when it comes to local government, you know, I always say the, the shortest amount of time measurable to man is the time it takes a, a state or federal official to forget what it was like being a local official, you know? a state or federal official to forget what it was like being a local official, you know, because the lip service is great, but then in the first round of of economic stimulus relief, you had to be a city of five hundred thousand or more to qualify. Now, apparently they're talking about two hundred thousand or more, which still leaves us out. And by the way, there are almost twenty thousand cities in the country and a very small percentage have more than you know, five hundred thousand or more people. I mean, you know, we're talking probably five percent of the cities or something. So but I am super proud of what we have been able to do in terms of stimulus and we're hoping to backfill some of that. But I wonder if you could just speak to that, some of the efforts that we've we've had underway to.
Sure. I I think that most people know the city council has been, you know, very supportive of providing relief to businesses during a very difficult time. We've used what resources we have. I'm I'm most proud of what we did with the underground surtax fund because it was a pretty unique application. People may know about that fund. It's a four percent or so tax on your utility bill to pay for the conversion of overhead to underground, but those projects take a very long time to do. And we had a pretty large amount of money in that fund. So upon the recommendation of of myself to the council, the council agreed to rebate to all of our power customers, two years' worth of collection and suspend collection for six months. Now, for the average household, that might have been maybe a hundred, two hundred dollars on your utility bill. But for a good number of our businesses, our restaurants and others, it was in the thousands and thousands of dollars. And we gave out, we returned, if you will, just under eleven million dollars to our customers without impacting our general fund. So it doesn't hurt our ability to provide services. It won't have any long term tax impact on the city, but it was eleven million dollar local stimulus into our economy. On top of that, we've been leveraging our community development block grant monies that we receive to provide rental support for people who are at risk of falling into homelessness as well as small business and micro business grants. So where we can, the city's been hustling. And of course, all the outdoor dining that you see, all the the K rails and all those things that allow that to happen has been underwritten by the city council. That's about another three hundred thousand dollars. We're going to be spending more money to support it. We've waived fees. We've waived parking charges. And so there's tremendous activities going on locally. Just one more comment on that. Again, because we're so unique here with our own local health department, we're doing so much more than any other similarly situated city. But because we're smaller than these half million cities that Councilmember Madison mentions, we're not getting the direct support back from the federal government or the state. So it's kind of a double whammy. We're spending more than, say, Glendale or Burbank because we have a mechanism to respond or a health department, but we're not getting the support. So under Mr. Madison's leadership on the Ledge Policy Committee, we're pounding on our people in Washington to recognize the effort that's going on here and and bring those dollars back to Pasadena.
And also, I think looking forward to keep some of these steps that we've implemented in place more permanently, like more outdoor dining and the like. That's an interesting question. I'd like, maybe we could finish with this one with each of you, you know, something that I talk to a lot of people about is we are going to, you know, this too shall pass. We we will get through this and we'll be hopefully the wiser for it. And 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 I'm greatly concerned about the the lag time. If you look back at calamities in our country, even things like the, you know, the economic collapse in two thousand and eight. There almost always is a lag time of the real impacts on unemployment and and real, you know, misery, frankly. So I think we have to continue to be vigilant and all, but my question is more one that's top of mind for the city always, which is quality of life of our community. And there seems to be two schools of thought, you know, will we be permanently changed and and, you know, be hermits and not want to go out to the theater or to the part or to restaurants and the Rose Bowl for a game or a concert, or will we will we come back with renewed vigor? And, you know, I I'm a glass half full sort of person on this that I think we're social beings. I think we want to be out and about and there's going to be a lot of pent up demand for that. So provided that we can do it prudently and and safely, that there's a lot of optimism for for the future. But I'd be interested in each of your takes. You're uniquely positioned here to take the temperature, if you will, of the of the community. So Steve, I'll start with you and then Dr. Morgan and Dr. Go.
I'm with you. I'm I'm optimistic. Seems like most leading economists and the IMF are also pretty optimistic about global growth in the third and fourth quarter of the year. I think there will be tremendous pent up demand. You know, I think about my own home and my wife says, well, the moment we can travel safely, you're taking longer vacation. Just so you know, I haven't given Dr. Go comp time, so when we get through this, she can take some much needed time off. You know, after the the nineteen eighteen nineteen nineteen Spanish flu, we had the roaring twenties. Economic growth up until the, you know, stock market crash was was over forty five percent in that decade. Now, I don't think it'll be that robust, but I think that there's a lot of things that are lining up in a positive way. And so I do think activity will return pretty positively, but a little more chastened perhaps. But I'm I'm looking forward to to next fall.
Dr. Morgan? You may be muted, Dr. Morgan.
Yes, sorry. Thank you. You know, I I I am very hopeful too, and I'm I'm just telling you, I'm I'm ready to go to a concert when it when it's safe to do so, underline, because that that's been probably the thing that I've missed the most, but you know, I do think that will be forever changed. You know, I suspect that you know, I can remember laughing kind of at my grandmother who used to rinse out plastic sandwich bags. Because she felt like it was wasteful to throw them away, having lived through the depression. And you know, I have to tell you, I suspect, should I ever have grandchildren, they're probably going to laugh at Nana for wearing a mask on an airplane because I'm not actually sure I'll ever fly on an airplane without a mask again. And so, you know, I think some of the things we really are going to have to think about, you know, I think one of the things that that I've been really struck by is at the, you know, at the height of our inpatient admissions, I actually did check and say, do we have anyone in the hospital from the flu? Because I'll tell you, in January, that's often up to thirty percent of the patients that we have in the hospital at any one time. We had no one in the hospital from the flu. Ooh, lesson learned from that. Quit shaking, you know, quit going to work sick and quit shaking hands and quit kissing people that you, you know, that aren't part of your family necessarily. So so I do think that that I think we're going to have to really think about. I mean, actually, from a business perspective, I think about the shaking hands piece, you know, have we really gotten to a place in our society where we're truly past that and we can bump elbows or pump fists or bow to each other or whatever that sign of acknowledgement is, but do it in a way. So I do think there are some things that that probably will be forever changed. I will tell you the one thing that I do feel strongly about missing about that I am very concerned about is the long ranging psychological impact. I worry about that a lot with our hospital workers, you know, where we have, you know, I told you earlier, we've had three hundred and nine deaths from COVID alone. I had to tell you, that's more deaths than we have in a year from anything most years. And we have, you know, we've had days in our ICU where our nurses have lost seven patients in one day. That that doesn't happen and it really takes a toll. And so I'm really for healthcare workers very worried about the toll that this has taken on on them and their overall outlook. But I also, you know, I also worry a lot about the children that have been sitting, you know, in front of Zoom cameras for, you know, hours a day trying to be remote. I think the statistics that we're starting to see that teen suicides are higher rate than they've ever been and probably has more of the facts on that than I do, but I am very worried about the long term psychological effects. And I personally would be more than happy to live in the roaring twenties environment when everything at least from from this distant historic perspective, looked like a lot of fun. But I do think that there will be some longstanding effects that we will be dealing with for years.
I have a senior in college and he's going to graduate this, you know, June or May or June without having attended a single in-person class in his senior year. And I'm I'm not complaining, believe me, with the families and the misery and pain that you've seen. Certainly, but it's it's affecting a whole generation of young people, I think. And and I will tell you, you are appreciated and please pass along our appreciation to your your healthcare professionals. And I have very little patience for those and there there's a number of them out there who say, oh, you know, there haven't really been that many deaths from COVID. The doctors just write that down as the cause of death because they get more money or something. I actually spent some time researching that and the number of fatalities in our country are way up from twenty twenty over twenty nineteen. And the truth is, as you point out, a lot of typical sort of demographic causes of death, traffic accidents, industrial accident are down in twenty twenty, as you would expect. So absolutely, there's no question. This has been a devastatingly deadly pandemic. And I agree with you on the handshake. I do. I don't know whether we'll do, what was it, Mr. Spock used to do, you know, live long and prosper. Maybe that'll be the substitute or the elbow bump or something, but I I do think we're going to approach that differently. So, Dr. Go, what's your sense?
I think judging from how challenging it has been for all of us to adhere to social distancing, that we'll have no problem bouncing back. I do worry about all of our children and my kids too. I don't want them to think that it's normal to have to use alcohol after everything you touch outside or, you know, stand far away from others. That's just not a healthy social interaction. So but I have confidence that they'll adapt back to normal very quickly. And and also, we've seen other countries that have had experience, for example, with the first SARS and be able to adapt and take on these measures very quickly and and as a result, save so many more lives and have a functioning economy for the most part. So I hope that whatever we look like in the future, that will be, it won't take as long for us to realize what we have to do.
Well, thank you, Dr. Go, Dr. Morgan, City Manager Steve Mermel, Field Rep Takaka Suzuki, who did a great job organizing Chris Willetts from our IT department for your technical help as always and guidance. And all of you, be well, stay safe. And we'll get through this, maybe even by the next town hall meeting, next quarter, we'll be in a better place. And we're grateful and good evening. Thank you.